Hello and welcome to represent NYC election coverage from Manhattan Neighborhood Network. I'm Ben Max, your host and the executive editor of Gotham Gazette. Today, we're pleased to bring you a debate in the general election for New York City Council District Four, with the two candidates who will be on the ballot, including the incumbent. District Four in the city council includes several neighborhoods, mostly on the east side of Manhattan, such as Carnegie Hill, Midtown East, Murray Hill, Peter Cooper Village and Stuyvesant Town, Sutton Place, parts of the Upper East Side, and still more. It includes Times Square as well. City Council member is a position that includes key responsibilities and powers around constituent services, local problem solving, legislating, budgeting, making land use decisions, and more. Voting in this race and others on the general election ballot here in 2021 will be done through absentee voting. The early voting period of October 23rd through October 31st. And election day is November 2nd, a Tuesday, of course. Along with the entire city council also on the ballot this fall are contests for borough president, district attorney, comptroller, public advocate, mayor, and more. So with me today for this general election debate in City Council District Four are, David Casavus is the Republican nominee, also on independent and libertarian ballot lines, and Keith Powers is the Democratic nominee and the incumbent in the city council seat. Thank you both for being here. It's an important time of choosing for New York City voters, and we're pleased to bring you this debate and many others, as well as interviews with individual candidates to help you get ready to vote this fall in the general election in these consequential New York City elections. So let's get into our debate here for City Council District Four. Very briefly, the rules for this 30-minute debate are that you'll each give one-minute opening statements in just a second, and then we'll have a series of questions from me and go round and round. You'll have about a minute and a half to answer each time. And then, as we get close to the end of our time together, I'll give you a chance for one-minute closing statements. I might ask you follow-up questions at any time, so don't be surprised if I jump in to ask you to provide a little more detail or an example or to clarify something. And if you disagree with your opponent, I'll try to give everybody a chance to respond to any disagreement or criticism or anything like that, but let's make sure that we keep it civil here and try not to interrupt each other's leads. All right, so let's get started here with opening statements. David Casavus, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'm David Casavus, and I didn't ask for this. I have always said, I didn't ask for this because no one wanted to run. Seriously, there was no one who ran in the primary. We were the only district in Manhattan that had no primary. No one wanted to run or nobody did run. And for myself, I didn't want to run. I was in my hospital bed about to get my gallbladder out, which I did not want to lose. And I was told, asked, "Look, would you at least put your name in there? Just be what they call a placeholder. We'll get somebody." I said, "Fine." After all that was done, I was told, "Well, we don't have anybody. Either you run or there's no election." There was no primary, there was no election. It was basically an appointed job. And I said, "No," because I believe in democracy. Now, I have suffered a great deal for this. I've had to raise a little bit of money. Nobody wants to give you money if you have nobody who wants to run. Now, this is serious. I actually wanted to contact the papers about this, but I couldn't even get the papers on the phone. So here I am, but the only chance I have to say is, "We need democracy. We do need a multi-party system." I've got three parties I've run on. I have never, I have never sought office. It has sought me. Why? I have run five times in the past, and all five times I've said no twice. And the third time, when I was asked to run so there could be election, I said yes.
Thank you.
So what I'm saying to people, consider, you've got a chance.
So here we are. All right, very good. Well, we'll look forward to hearing some of your thoughts on the district and the issues of the constituents. And for the democratic process, we're happy that you're participating and hopefully you have some thoughts on issues facing New Yorkers, especially in this district. All right, Councilmember Powers, your opening statement, you're seeking reelection here. Go ahead, you have one minute.
I am, and thank you, Ben, for having me today. And of course, David, thank you for being part of the democratic process. I know it is important and I agree, and I do want this. I'm the city council member of the Fourth Council District, Keith Powers. And for the last four years, it has been a real honor to represent the district that I grew up in, the district where I live in Stuyvesant Town, and of course, the district that encompasses the east side of Manhattan and Midtown and so many great neighborhoods here in Manhattan. As I said, it's a community I was born in. I'm a third-generation resident of Stuyvesant Town and Peter Cooper Village, and I've had the privilege and fortune to be able to live here and go to school here throughout my life. Over the last four years, I've been really proud of the work we've been doing in District Four, like passing the affordable housing deal that was historic at Waterside Plaza, championing the 14th Street Busway, delivering long-term storm and resiliency protections on the East River, standing with tenants in my neighborhood against further deregulation. And particularly during COVID, my team and my office had worked tirelessly when it comes to delivering food and PPE to our neighbors, helping make vaccine appointments for people that needed it, helping hundreds of people get onto unemployment insurance and providing support to our local small businesses. I, in the council, in my last four years, have authored a pass legislation to protect employees against sexual harassment, prevent housing discrimination, reform our criminal justice system, and support our neighborhood businesses. And that's why I'm hoping to be the council member again. And of course, I would love to have everyone's support on November 2nd to continue to work here and guide our city through the COVID recovery.
Thank you. David Casavus, are there issues that you're running on? Are there stances that you have? Are there top priorities that you have that you want voters to know about as they're considering this general election that you were forced into, as you mentioned, but you're participating to make sure there's a democratic choice here? So are there things that you're focused on?
Yes, there are three things, actually, that everybody's focused on. First would be public safety. You can't get anywhere without public safety. The second would be recovery. We need economic recovery. If you don't believe me, look at all the empty storefronts, all the four lease signs out there. And third, affordable housing. Everybody, and I mean everybody in Manhattan, is going to say the same thing. So there really isn't any debate about any future. What is important is that we have a chance to make that happen. You can't make that happen with the crew that we've got in City Hall today. You just can't. Now, hopefully, we will have a new mayor, hopefully we'll have a mayor that I will support if I can get into office. As a Republican and an independent and a libertarian, I would be the opposition. There's almost no opposition. We've got three people there. The first thing I would do is I would join the opposition and say, "Let's go through something to try to get us on our feet." If we don't have public safety, that's it. You're going nowhere. You're not going to have economic recovery. And I've heard both candidates for mayor appeal for that. And that's why I'm here to say, there may be 10 districts out of 51 where you can turn in a minority. This is one of the 10. You actually have enough people registered in something other than the leading party that actually could vote against the choice of the very few people. I'm asking only that we have democracy.
All right, we can come back to your issues in a second, but let's stick with public safety since you listed that first and mentioned it a couple of times.
Oh, what a safe town we live in.
What's the top priority there? Give us one policy that you would pursue or one budgetary action if you were a city council member. What's one top thing you want voters to know that you would pursue as a city council member to make?
We need more police, period. No, we need police. It's that simple. And the police have to have a free hand to do what they have to do. Now, there are a lot of issues that attend that, but to actually vilify the police is awful. And our people just want to get to work safely and get home safely. That's all they're asking, if they have work.
When you say that we need more police, do you mean more police out on patrol in the city or actually adding to the police force? I believe New York City has the highest per capita police force in the country, perhaps, or at least of major cities. Are you saying add to the police force or are you saying get more officers out of control?
We need police on the beat who can be effective. Certainly, we have to address bail bond issues. You know, one of my students who was running in Staten Island actually was jumped. His wife's purse was taken. And he and a bunch of other guys stopped the person, the perpetrator, brought him to the police station, and he said on the way, "Why are you even bothering to bring me to the police station? I'll be released immediately." And he was. So he could steal another purse. This is the kind of detail we've got to get involved with. If we're not talking about this, we're not talking about recovery.
So just very quickly, and we'll come to Mr. Powers, in a case like that, you prefer that person to be held pre-trial in jail?
To be held. Jail space? I don't even know if we have enough jail space for this. I'm anti-purse snatching.
Understood. I think that's fairly universal. All right, Mr. Powers, top priorities, top priorities that you have if given another term? You hit on this a little bit in your opening statement, but what do you want voters to know? That you're focused on if you have a few more months in this term as we're talking here in early October, but if you're given that bump to another term, which would only be two years because of redistricting, what do you want voters to know that you would focus on?
Great. Well, look, we don't have different priorities, to be honest, and I think David is actually right. Manhattanites and constituents of mine are asking for a lot of different things right now. Obviously, economic recovery and getting a safe recovery during COVID, which includes vaccinations and public health, but also includes getting Midtown in my district and other hubs of people back to work, which helps our storefront retail and all the businesses that have been struggling during that, leading into also helping out our small businesses. And I think in the council, we have done a lot around that. We've done obviously the stuff like outdoor dining. We've regulated third-party apps. We've put a moratorium on personal liability provisions and done a lot to try to help the small businesses that have been struggling during the pandemic. We need to do a lot more of that. We talked about housing affordability. That's number one issue for I think any New Yorker, especially in the fourth district. I've looked at a number of ways we can do that, both with the big affordable housing deals we can do, which I did at Waterside Plaza to protect and preserve affordable rents there. In Stuyvesant Town, Peter Cooper, we have opened a lawsuit against the management here to keep the apartments regulated and have been fighting for affordability here. Obviously, before I was a council member, was on the 10th Association here doing that work. I've introduced legislation to prevent source of income discrimination for low-income New Yorkers to make sure they can get housing. I've addressed upfront fees for renters, because in Manhattan, my district, it's not just the rent, it's all the other fees that you pay when you try to get an apartment, and we need to tackle those costs as well. Public safety, of course, we have a gun violence problem here in the city right now. I think it's the number one issue, but of course, every New Yorker has to feel safe walking in their neighborhood and making sure that they have a neighborhood that is worth living in and worth working in and worth continuing to stay here in the city. And I had one more, which is just making sure we maintain and have a world-class transit system. That is why people want to live in Manhattan, that's why people want to live in New York City. And whether it's like championing the 14th Street Busway, looking at the big investments in transit we've made in East Midtown as part of the governing group, giving people safe and environmentally friendly ways to get around the city. I think we have a lot to do in the recovery also to make sure that people have options and have a way to get around the city. And I think we've done a lot in my term, worked on that.
I want to come back to a few things you mentioned there, Mr. Powers. But on public safety, what's the top priorities to make the district, the city safer? What do you think needs to be done moving forward on that front?
Two things. One is, I mentioned the gun violence problem in the city that's really, I think, is right at its head during the pandemic. We have not only a local, but a nationwide gun violence crisis. And I think we have to stop pretending it's not happening. Some folks are pretending it's not happening. I think getting guns off the streets of New York City. It doesn't necessarily impact the Fourth Council District like it affects other areas, but it does intersect with our district too. But the basics of making sure that we're addressing and rooting out the causes of gun violence in the city. But also something that was mentioned before is, I do think of the everyday issues. I think it is fair to say that, New Yorkers, I don't think we need more to add to the headcount, but I do think having this ability that we're tackling issues like sanitation, that those sort of basic issues that make people feel like their neighborhood is clean and being attended to, to other issues around just the sort of basics of quality of life. I think we hear from issues about that every day, and particularly in Midtown right now, where there has not been a lot of folks or having been people walking around. I think you're going to make sure we're attending to those issues.
And quickly, Mr. Powers, whether it's on policing or it's on sanitation, you know, there were some budget cuts to both at different times over the last couple of years, but nothing, you know, sort of monumental here. The police were not defunded. The sanitation department, you know, got hit, but it was not a major defunding. What's broken? What needs to change here where these heavily-resourced city agencies are just not functioning with maximum efficiency and impact? And what's at the root of this and what can you as a city council member do to improve that?
Yeah, I mean, a number of things. One is, I think that, I mean, some of these areas have, like the sanitation budget, we did have to make some cuts to it. We restored and we put the cleanup corps and other things in place to help attend to those issues. But end of the day, I mean, we have lived through a year and a half where there's been a major disruption in everybody's lives. I think we know that with public safety, you have to be able to do the policing aspect of it, but you also have to have basic stability in people's lives and you have to maintain a city. I think there's been a disruption in everything in Midtown to the people's everyday lives, sort of circulating in those areas to disruption in people's everyday lives as a result of COVID. We've also had a police force that 20% of them were out sick at COVID at a particular time. They've been stretched thin over the last year. So even being able to pay attention to those issues, I think, has been heard over the last year. So I think it's hard to look at this past year and make it a marker of any trajectory or any progress, but it is an inflection point, and it is a moment where you have to look at these issues. As city council member, everything from budgeting to make sure we're directing resources to particular areas where it's needed. And also, as a council member, we have supplemental services to be put in place. I have supplemental sanitation services on the Upper East Side and in Murray Hill to help hit those hotspots. So a lot of things we need to do, and we're working on those.
All right, Mr. Casavus, you want to jump in on effectiveness in city agencies? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, let me start with, a lot of this is nonsense. I bothered to walk the district, and we do have a Rhode Island tourist was wounded on the edge of the district. I walked over there and found out someone was firing from the district into the next district and hit four people. I asked the police, "This is Midtown East. That area is pretty dangerous." It can be. There are a lot of tourists there, and they're the ones that get ripped off. This is ridiculous. You need more cops on the street, okay? Let's just say that. The more police there is on the street, the more deterrence there is. And the police have got to know that they can arrest somebody with a gun with impunity. And they've got to know that they will be held in detention somewhere without being let go to get their gun again and shoot somebody. If you think it's difficult to get a gun in New York City, try again, think again. And there's another problem with weapons. When someone fires a bullet, it doesn't disappear into nothing. It hits something. Even in my part of the district, someone fired from about, what was it, Third Avenue? And it went right through to Lexington Park before it hit something. That person was shooting at somebody else. This is a dangerous time. This is a difficult time, and I'm not going to repeat all the things that other people do and say, "Oh, yes, that's what I'm doing." Other people do these things. If you sit in the city council, it's a part-time job, and you can claim what other people do. What you need to do is help your people.
Mr. Casavus, let me ask you this. One of the key jobs of a city council member obviously is constituent services. Clearly, there are many different types of constituent services, including weighing in on and moving on issues we're already talking about, public safety, sanitation, small business, housing, et cetera. But in terms of hearing from constituents, in terms of outreach to constituents, how would you do that part of the job if you were elected, Mr. Casavus? Would you have any different type of approach to making sure that you're hearing from the many thousands of constituents in the district to sort of gauge what they care about and issues that are bubbling up?
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up, because part of the pay that you get, aside from just an office for free near the city council, near City Hall, is you get a budget so you can buy another office. You can rent another office in your area. And then, of course, you're paid for four or five people to do the job for you. After all, this is a part-time job, and it must be really difficult to do it without two offices and four or five people. Now, about response, right?
Just to be clear, Mr. Casavus, it is a full-time job.
A full-time job.
It is a full-time job.
I agree with that, but it's still listed part-time.
Not exactly, but that's okay. Continue, continue with your points about constituents. So you have a staff and you have a district office. All right, so what are you doing with?
Oh, you'll hear from them. The question is, will you answer them? Now, honestly, I walked the district. I decided to talk with people, and my Lord, I get more complaints than I could shake a stick at. The thing is, oh, they don't know the answer, or they don't get back to me, or nobody listens, and on and on and on. I'm sick of it. So if I were elected, I'd tell my staff, who are well-paid by the city, "I don't want to be sick of this anymore. Would you mind answering the questions that come in?" And also, I would appear a little bit, where I could appear, in the district. And the district is really divided up, and the interests are quite different. You know, about 20% of the district is Stuytown, Peter Cooper Village. About 30% of there are Democrats, but that's not the whole district. The district is the Upper East Side. It's got the water side. It's got Tudor City, and these are very different places.
So you need to be nimble as a council member. Councilmember Powers, how have you approached constituent services in your term thus far? And are there things that you would do to improve upon how you approach that part of the job if you're given another couple of years here?
Sure. I have to say, one of the things I'm proudest of is our responsiveness and our constituent services in my office. And I think if you ask anybody, we are one of the most responsible offices, and we provide, I think, one of the high-quality constituent services. I was named number one legislator a couple of years ago by city and state, and part of it was based on constituent services and responsiveness and legislative activity. And I know the job. I mean, I'm sort of frightened to hear that some of the basics of the job, like not knowing it's a full-time job, is being represented here. We have an office right in the district. We do mobile district office hours. I brought participatory budgeting to the district for the very first time. We are out and about. It's not hard to find my office, and I'm really proud of the seven staffers, actually, that I have in my office that are working to respond to every single issue in the communities and to work with individual constituents of large communities on the issues that they're facing. You know, Mr. Casavus, it doesn't feel like you frankly know what the job is or the basics of it, and including it's a part-time job, but I do. And I'm really proud of the folks that work for iTunes War, taking an oath of public service to help out the fourth district in New York City, and they're doing a great job. And all of them, every single day, I'm proud of the work they're doing to be completely responsive. And whether it's pushing out on the weekends into the mobile district office hours or doing the PB or just simply answering the calls of everyday New Yorkers, not to mention thousands of people that we worked to help get unemployment insurance last year, delivering PPE, setting up a food pantry here in Stuyvesant, delivering our food. We have been on the ground, and we've been working, and I'm really proud of all those efforts.
Quickly, Mr. Powers, the community boards that overlap with your district, are there ways that you interact with them? Are there ways that you are trying to ensure that, you know, you're hearing what the constituents of the community boards are, but also that you're making sure that the community boards aren't running the city council office?
Yeah, they don't. We appoint them in their advisory, obviously. We have been looking for really good, active partners and try to diversify the community boards as well in my district for, whether it's about socioeconomic status to obviously to make changes in the racial makeup of the boards as well. I think those are the first stop on land use items and community issues. I was a member of Community Board Six. I was a chairman of the committee there. Prior to that, I went my old life working for John and Bang. I had been a liaison CBA, so I have a very long history with a lot of those folks working with them. We work with the chairs. We go to the district cabinet meetings, the Borough Board. The folks that we've been able to put on, but also the folks who've been at part-time are people I really admire because they're volunteers, giving up their free time to be able to help the community as well. And, you know, whether it's the community board meetings, other meetings, we are, yeah, obviously, I'm meeting as often as my staff.
Before I get into another question, Mr. Casavus, do you want to respond to anything Mr. Powers just said? He obviously mentioned you.
Oh, where do I begin? It's exasperating. I mean, seriously, volunteers volunteer so they can get something, but that's something else. I mean, for crying out loud.
So, David, do you want to speak to the question on community boards and how you'd interact with community boards as a city council member?
I'd appoint people who are interested in the community board and not people who want to run for office later on. You're supposed to be, you're supposed to serve people. They don't serve you, and that's a major problem we have. What a major problem we have is that we have people who've been in politics all their lives. We have people who've never had a job in their life. They can't relate to their own constituents because constituents have to work. The constituents have to make a living. They just don't siphon funds off the city. You're supposed to help people. Now, if I sound like an amateur here, that would be fine. I'd be happy to be an amateur, because honestly, it's, New York City is, well, there are times when it gets to be borderline criminal, but that's okay. I don't mind. I would just like a democracy. Thank you very much.
And we heard you at the beginning of the debate say that that's why you're here, to ensure the democratic process without an uncontested election. So you're doing that. All right, we're in our last five or six minutes here, and we're going to get to closing statements in a few minutes. But, Mr. Powers, let me come back to you on the struggle of small businesses. What can be done? Is there legislative, you know, areas of legislation that you're considering? Are you worried about more mandates on small businesses? You know, how are you thinking about how the city council can help a small business revival here after COVID?
Yeah, one of the things, thanks for the question. It is undoubtedly, I mean, everybody should be concerned about the future of small businesses and the vacancy rate in my district and throughout the city. But notably, there was a report that came out yesterday that looked at vacancy rates throughout the city right now or struggling businesses as a result of the decline in foot traffic, particularly in areas like Midtown where people are not returning to work and not being able to support those businesses. I have a few things we've been working on, and one is eliminating the commercial rent tax and building on efforts from my predecessor. It's an unfair tax that hits Manhattan businesses below 96th Street. It is just a revenue raiser for the city. I have a bill that would eliminate it and also another bill to raise the floor on it. I think my councilman, Geronick, my predecessor, was smart and right to build on that. During last year, we put out a plan to open for business, which was ways the city could get into helping small businesses during the pandemic. We've taken up some of those things, but a number of steps we took. One is obviously keeping those businesses in place during the COVID crisis. Eviction moratoriums are good, but also making sure people don't lose their livelihood. There was a bill we did, the personal liability provision in the city council to eliminate that. We have done ways to help them boost their revenue. I've been one of the big champions of outdoor dining in the city. I think it has been in addition to not only the city's landscape, but a way to keep the small struggling businesses in place. We've just passed a legislation a couple of weeks ago to take the city a step back with the talk of the mandates, but all the fines and fees that add up to folks. Right now is not the time to be sending inspectors or, you know, being overly punitive. And I'm proud of a bill we just passed a few weeks ago to put the city, start to issue more warnings and being more helpful with guidance to businesses rather than just hitting them with fines and fees. And the last thing to say is, you know, right now, we have to, I'll stop there. But the end game is, I'll say is, one of the big ideas that we put out during the, I did work with state colleagues on, is to do Affordable Lease Program. It was called the Recovery Lease Program, and it was meant to use federal dollars to do tax abatements to help give businesses an opportunity to stay in their business during COVID, get an affordable lease. We need our city and state partners to work together to do a lot of that.
That's a proposal at this point still.
It's a proposal. There's a bill in Albany we've been working on. I hope Eric Adams is maybe the next mayor will take that up.
All right, we're going to move into closing statements in just a minute. Mr. Casavus, you have one minute on small businesses. Anything you want to say about how you would approach trying to help small businesses survive, revive in the post-COVID economy here?
I will take credit for what other people do. Let me start with that. Small businesses need a chance to get started. Most of the successful small businesses that survived this COVID-19 got a cut in their lease. They actually went back to the landlord and renegotiated. That's really the key. How much is it going to cost? One of the things the landlords will probably do is give six months free rent or something like that, but then it will come back up to the price that rents are at now. I know this because I speak the language of real estate. I have a rare degree in real estate analysis, and I've done a lot of analysis for the city and other cities. No, there's no easy solution to this, except stop taxing people to death.
Mr. Casavus will stick with you for a closing statement. You have one minute to tell voters why they should choose you here in the general election for City Council District Four. Go ahead.
It's a chance for the minority to stand up. Those are all minorities. I've always been a minority, whether I'm Republican, independent, or libertarian. The city, the city's hurting. We're going to have four bad years, maybe even six, and we need someone who bothers to be around, someone who is not looking at the next office and someone who doesn't read off a script given to me or to anybody by a politician listing what other people did. You've got to do something. You have to appear. You've got to show up, and you also have to relate to your constituents and understand that your constituents aren't the 30% of the Democrats in the district who are in Peter Stuyvesant, Peter Cooper, or Stuytown. It's just not so. And by the way, most of the information I got was from people. And if I made an error, okay. But honestly, my people need help, and they don't need somebody who's using this as a stepping stone to move on to the state senate, and that's serious stuff. Can yield the rest of my time to my opponent. He has much to say.
You hit right on a minute, so you're good. Thank you. We appreciate that. All right, Mr. Powers, your closing statement, talk to voters about why they should reelect you. Go ahead.
Sure, and I'm not running for state senate, so just want to be clear about that too. Thank you. Thank you, Ben, and thank you, Mr. Casavus, for the opportunity to talk again about the issues facing the Fourth Council District. Thank you. Thank you, Ben, and thank you, Mr. Casavus, for the opportunity to talk again about the issues facing the fourth council district. And as you heard, then we have a lot of the same priorities, but I think the last year and a half, particularly, and over the last four years, we have worked very hard on behalf of the districts of District Four. I'm proud of being a resident of Stuyvesant, happy to Cooper, but from 14th Street up to 98th, I'm really proud of the work that we have done to be responsive to constituents' concerns, to work on the big issues facing the city, and to be responsive to the needs of the fourth council district and the city during COVID. And as I mentioned, during the last year and a half, not only have we worked really hard on ways to be innovative and put out ideas and work on legislation to help improve the small businesses and the lives of individuals in this, in this city and this district. But I've been really proud of the work we have done and to hit the ground. The day that the city shut down, we didn't sit there and we got to work. We opened up a food pantry here. We started delivering thousands of, with the management in town, we delivered thousands of boxes of foods, not only to the fourth council district, but the entire city, particularly public housing here in the city. We set up a phone bank throughout the weekdays, calling seniors in the district, making sure they had everything they need. We made thousands, 10,000 calls to seniors here in the district. We got to work on looking for solutions about how to tackle rents and tackle small businesses. We went out and we did the work to make sure that folks had the basics, like PPE, had access to food and the things that they would need in a moment of insecurity. And I was, that was probably the thing I was the most proud of in my time here, and my staff and my team, the people that we put together during that moment is something that I will always be proud of, is that we, you know, tried to do as much as we can to help people at their most urgent moments. So now to to push us past that moment and to focus on recovery, and I hope to have everyone's support in November 2nd, we'll do that.
Thank you. David Casavus, Keith Powers, candidates for city council district four. Thank you both for taking the time for today's debate. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for watching. Represent NYC election coverage from Manhattan Neighborhood Network. There are a lot of choices coming up for voters this fall in the general election here in New York City. Hope this debate and others are helpful to you as you prepare to vote. But please do make sure to be ready to vote in the general election here. I'm Ben Max. See you next time.